As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I call this regular Town Council meeting to order. I'd like to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton. First in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
We have one, sir. It's just the addition under consent. We are placing a resolution accepting the updated state revolving loan for the wastewater reclamation facility, and that will update the loan amount to ninety-five million, and asking that be placed under consent.
All right, I have that noted. So the next item is the consent agenda.
Move, we approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Administrative Items, 4A is the Resolution 2022 Town of Clayton Holiday Schedule.
Thank you. Presented before you is Resolution Number 2021-42, and it lays out the proposed holiday schedule for Town of Clayton employees for 2022. And historically, we have followed the NC State and their guidelines for holidays. So this is what this does have. There is one addition to it this year. You will see that I have included on there, Juneteenth, since it has been declared a federal holiday. So it is included in there for your consideration as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments for clerk? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
A move, we approve the holiday schedule.
Put the motion and a second for adoption of the Holiday Resolution Number 2021-42. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. All right, resolution? Resolution. Resolution 2022 Town of Clayton Town Council Meeting Schedule.
Okay, before you is the proposed meeting schedule for your council meetings for 2022. The council meets at the first and third Monday of each month, with the only change to that being in July, where you have only one meeting. Anytime that a holiday falls on Monday, the council meeting would be held on Tuesday, and that is what this schedule proposes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Questions or comments for the clerk? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve the adoption of the Resolution 2021-43. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. Then next is a recommendation for appointment to the Library Advisory Board.
Yes, the Library Advisory Board recently had two vacancies. One was an ETJ position, and one was an in-town position. To date, we have not received any applications for ETJ. So we did go ahead and move forward with interviews for our in-town position. Interviews included myself, Joy Garrettson, our library director, as well as Lori Lee, who is the chair from the Library Advisory Board. Great applicants. We are recommending that William Wheeler be appointed to fill an unexpired vacancy with a term that would expire 12/31/2023. And just a reminder, we still have a vacancy for an ETJ on that as well.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approval of the appointment. Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the appointment to the Library Advisory Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the presentation of Baptist Center Church recognition. And that's in big print. It's okay. Yeah, please come forward, and I'd like to read a note of recognition, and then I'd like to step down and present that on behalf of the town. Recognition. Baptist Center Church 150th Anniversary. Baptist Center Church was organized on July the 28th, 1871 by members of the four surrounding Baptist churches: Johnston Liberty, now known as First Baptist Clayton, Mount Moriah, Shiloh, and Bethesda. Under the leadership of the church's first pastor of record, Elder Amos Weaver, a vision to help establish a permanent place of worship had begun, and on Sunday, July 30th, 1871, Baptist Center Church was officially constituted. The first building was constructed approximately one month following the constitution of the Baptist Center. The church was unfurnished when its members first met in September 1871. And for over 150 years, Baptist Center Church has remained a place to nourish its members spiritually and improve the life of the community. And Baptist Center Church has supported many groups and organizations within the community and honors our servicemen and women, decorated veterans, and loved ones who paid the supreme price for our freedom. And Baptist Center Church is commemorating its 150th church anniversary with several events planned from July 2021 to July 2022. The homecoming anniversary service is October 17th, 2021, with revival services from October 18th through the 21st, 2021. And the 150th anniversary theme is Remember, Rejoice, Renew. The mission statement for the Baptist Center Church is, "We seek to glorify the Lord by becoming transformed disciples through loving God, connecting to the body, serving with our gifts, and engaging with the lost." And therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, the Clayton Town Council wishes to recognize and commemorate the 150th anniversary of Baptist Center Church on this joyous and memorable anniversary on this fourth day of October 2021. Mayor Jody McLeod. Thank you, gentlemen. Up next is the new employee onboarding welcome video.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have been working with our human resources department to welcome our new employees, and part of that with the communication department is really just explaining to them and show them what a wonderful culture and community that we have in Clayton. And thanks to our wonderful videographer, communication specialist, Nader, Apple Halsin, we have created just a great little short video we'd like to show you this evening that really just kind of captures some of what happens here in Clayton. And you'll see there is a familiar star at the beginning of it.
Hello, I'm Clayton Mayor Jody McLeod, and I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to Town of Clayton. Congratulations on your new position. I believe it says a lot about you to be offered a position with the Town of Clayton. Not only will it be a great place to be, but a great place to work. I hope you're a fantastic asset to our team.
My apologies, I was getting that ring out.
I promise of the career. I know you're going to be a fantastic asset to our team, and we're all looking forward to working with you because our sponsors are the very best and the source of strength that we provide. So congratulations on your new position with the Town of Clayton, and welcome.
He does do a good job, doesn't he?
That is fantastic. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Nader. Thank you, Nathaniel. Thank your team. And let me tell you, you know, I think our council definitely agrees that, you know what, we really want our new employees to feel welcomed and get really antiquated with who we are and what we're about. And I think this video is a perfect lead-in for all that.
Can I say one more thing? I know I've only been here six months, but what I see in that video is what I see in Clayton. That has been my experience, and it's just a truly wonderful, wonderful town to be a part of.
Awesome. Well, you guys did a great job. Thank you, you and your team. Fantastic. Mr. Bun?
Mr. Mayor, we have such a great photographer that does these videos. He really needs to be recognized. And he's here tonight. Nader, you're gonna love me. If you wouldn't mind stepping out of the closet and give us some facial recognition in case y'all ever see him on the street.
He's like, I ain't coming out there. Come on, Nader. We just want to say thank you. Get in the light. I would never do that because the next video I had to make, he would not make it so good, and my words would be real messed up, and I'm like, yeah. That's awesome. No, thank you, Mr. Bun. That was perfect. Up next on the agenda are the new employee introductions.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be with you today to be able to introduce two new staff members. One of those will be familiar to you. But again, we have thoroughly enjoyed our last several onboarding sessions where HR, communications, and staff have collaborated to make this a great starting experience for our employees. It is really coming together. And what we do, that video, is the beginning of the morning, which is the lunch, to get them getting the nerves and the jitters out, to know they've come to a place of alp family. So we have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I get the honor to introduce to you first, Mr. Greg Nelson. I'm gonna ask Mr. Greg Nelson to come up. You probably know this gentleman. He has been in the Town of Clayton since 2014. And Greg, the day that I met him was approachable. He was real. He is known as honest, and he is hardworking and follows through. When he applied to move from being a crew leader on our grounds maintenance department to apply for a position of Superintendent of Property Maintenance, he rose to the top clearly for those types of attributes that I've described. He has a wealth of experience, over 25 years of experience in construction, both commercial, industrial, residential. He has been called upon over the years numerous times to construct projects within this building, even though he worked on the grounds crew. We are thrilled to have him join our department. As you know, Mr. Moore decided to re-retire a couple of months back, and we had to go back and start again. But everything happens for reasons, I believe. And people are brought to us, and talent is brought to us, to accomplish certain goals. And I truly believe that Greg is one of those people. One of the things I will also say about Greg was, when we asked him, and several times when I've met him and during the interview, he is loyal to Clayton, and he wants the best for Clayton. I can assure you that he keeps saying, "I'm going to be here. I want to be here." One of the things, even though he has a tremendous wealth of knowledge in construction, he could be anywhere across the state and other states, but he wanted to be home with his family. And family and his grandchildren is what you hear him speak of most fondly. I believe there's nine of them, and he wanted to be home with them. Clayton, now with this position, has given him the opportunity to use his skills in construction, be at home with his family, and being able to provide for his family and his grandchildren. And so we are absolutely delighted to have you. Already in a week, I have seen so much progress. I have been calling him like they call me Mama Gill everywhere I go, but I've been calling him to say, "How is your day going? How are things going?" And we are so proud of him already. I'm gonna let him speak a little bit and tell you all anything about himself that he would like to share.
First, fortunately for me, this is my third time interviewing this. And this is probably the most important one, to be at least where I've been to be for the last few years. She's pretty much some of most of my stuff up there. I'm a family person. I do love the Town of Clayton. I've lived and lived and lived and stayed here. I really do appreciate God to work on these buildings, see what we can do. Thank you.
Awesome. We're glad you're here. Absolutely.
Also, we are proud to introduce today a new facility maintenance technician, and I'm going to ask Mr. Gustavo Menjavir to come to the front. And I'm going to get to talk about him a little bit now. Gustavo, who goes by Gus, also comes to us with a wealth of experience in maintaining buildings, most currently having worked with the Raleigh Housing Authority, both in maintenance as well as in working with setting up contracts for different types of work. He also has worked in apartment complexes. He has worked tremendously for his church. He is a leader in his church, both mentoring other folks. I don't know if you knew I knew that about you. I try to do my homework about folks. A leader and a mentor, teaching others how to maintain in the church, how to be a good leader. He has all the qualities that we look for. We had a rigorous application process for this position. Mr. Gustavo came in two times, and each time again, he rose to the top as being a tremendous candidate. He lives right up the road. He has cut his drive from about 40 minutes to seven minutes. And he is excited about that because he has two children who go to Johnston County Public Schools, and his family is right up the road in the East Clayton area. And he also, during his interview, said, "Family was important to him. Clayton was important to him." So I believe, just as Nathaniel said, when you get folks who get what we have to offer here in Clayton, they want to serve Clayton. So we are absolutely delighted to have you with us. He has been with us. This is his second week, and I'd like to turn it over to you to introduce yourself as well.
There is no doubt much to say, right? Thank you very much. I'm so happy to be here, and I want to thank God first to give me this opportunity to be here and all of you, this great, great, great opportunity. I feel so, so glad to be here. And it looks like you called my pastor and all these people, right, too, and asked about me. But thank you all for this great opportunity. I live here in Clayton. I love this town, and I feel so happy now because I can serve my people around here. So that made me feel so blessed. So thank you very much. Thank you.
That's wonderful, Gus. Welcome.
I've watched the man around in one week and never really before, but in one week, you can see the knowledge.
That's a great compliment. Awesome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Joshua Berry, Engineering Director. I'm excited to be back before you. Two council meetings in a row introducing staff, so excited about that. Tonight, I'm going to introduce to you Pat Payne. He started last week as project manager in the engineering department. Pat has, he's been with us for a full week and just jumped right in. He's got a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. He's also spent some time in ECU in construction management. He's a licensed professional engineer. Prior to coming to Clayton, he was with the Town of Fuquay Varina for three years as a utility staff engineer, and I believe the utility staff engineer, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm all things water and sewer, working for Fuquay Varina, and seeing different projects on CIP come through there, as well as development projects. He's worked through the CIP with the Town of Fuquay as well. Prior to that, he was with the city of Raleigh for about 10 years, with their infrastructure team as a project engineer, reviewing development plans, working through capacity studies, and reviewing different development plans. So Pat's on board as a project manager specifically for water and sewer projects. So he's going to really help us knock out some of those water and sewer projects we've got out there, some pump station abandements. We've got some elevated storage tanks we're working on. So when bringing Pat on and his expertise and everything he brings to the table, we'll be able to actually jump on some of these projects and knock things out and get us moving forward in terms of our infrastructure. Excited to have him, excited by his expertise, and certainly him jumping in. So with that, I'll introduce Pat Payne and allow him to say a few words.
Been living here in Clayton for about 14 years. So I've actually, I think this was the second time I interviewed here. I've been trying to get down here. So I'm set over in Fuquay, which is kind of the same thing, opposite side. So I've got an idea of what you guys are going through and everything, all the growth and all that. So I'm hoping I can help out with that and make sure we get things done at a good pace and get them done right, more importantly. So thank you for the opportunity. Plan on being here for a long time.
Because we're gonna have a lot of projects for a long time.
Yeah, I know.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, under Public Hearings, is the 2020-103 PDD Lumen Rezoning.
Good evening, council. I would like to request that Items 6A, 6B, and 6C be continued October 18th, 2021.
All right. Questions or comments, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, a move, we continue Items 6A, B, and C to the October 18th, 2021 meeting.
All right. We have a motion and a second for continuance of the 6A, B, and C Lumen Economic Development Project until October 18th, 2021. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Next, under Old Business, is the LAP Project Update.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Sorry for that pause. I thought it was all up. Wanted to review our, give you an update on our LAP projects. LAP is the Locally Administered Projects Program that is facilitated by the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. And it's a program that has been used fairly frequently by the town. These are two projects that we have done pre-applications on and hope to, by the end of the month, submit our final applications for. All of these are part of being members of Campo and do require a local match of a minimum of 20%. So, previous projects are Sam's Branch Greenway Extension, the First Street Extension, and the Ranch Road Extension that's currently going on as well, or right now. In 2023, the two projects that we are recommending for pre-application are the Main Street Sidewalk Extension and the East Clayton Gateway Extension of the Greenway. So, Main Street Sidewalk Extension is from Central Street to Business 70 and really is a critical link in terms of connecting downtown to Business 70. Sidewalks on both sides, the town did do, is finalizing design in the Public Works Department right now, and will be applying for right-of-way and construction funds. We're finalizing all those numbers, but anticipate the grant request will be between $450,000 and $500,000. This is just a brief map of this and shows in the kind of magenta or pink there, the existing sidewalk network. The yellow is the proposed sidewalks. So, really demonstrates how it's going to be connecting existing businesses and residents there to key services at the post office, some of our restaurants, and multifamily facilities like there at Heritage Court, and also future projects such as the spinning mill and other things like that into downtown. So, it really should be a great project here, and we're hoping we're competitive. Our next project is the East Clayton Greenway Extension. This is one that we applied for last year after looking at it closer, and we're looking at doing this for design only. It does include a crossing at 42 West and getting up at Glen Laurel across the highway there. And we believe that it'll be between a $350,000 and $400,000 request, but we are finalizing those at the moment. It's currently in the STIP, but with where the State Transportation Investment Program, where that's at right now and where they put on pause and basically, yeah, the state of the program, they decided not to fund any programs in spot six. We've decided that if we're going to do this, we probably need to take some leadership on our own, was our belief, and that shows where it goes there and really extends that out and gets it on a path that hopefully will start, get us one step closer to connecting what the county is doing on their efforts to move from east to west from Smithfield and really complete that network. So, with that, I'll take any questions, and I appreciate your time tonight.
All right. Questions or comments? All right. I think we're good. Thank you so much for the update.
Thank you.
It was awesome.
All right. Up next, under new business is resolution for application of state trail status.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm coming here tonight to ask for y'all's support in the application that we would like to send to the state for the East Coast Greenway is now an official state trail. On June 25th, as you may or may not know, it became an official state trail. If, with y'all's support and if we fill the application out and get it submitted, the East Coast Greenway, Sam's Branch, will be part of that state trail system, and it'll also give us the ability to get any funding or grants that come with that. So, we're looking for y'all's support tonight.
Awesome. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowen.
I make a motion with adopt Resolution 2021-44. Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution Number 2021-44. Is there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
See you on a second.
Thank you, Matt. Up next is the resolution authorizing town manager to execute industry agreements with Grifols and Novo.
Mayor and Town Council, Rich Capola, interim town manager. As you are aware, we've been discussing with our two major industrial customers here in town, Grifols and Novo Nordisk, the need to enter into some agreements at the request of the local government commission relative to our future wastewater project or current wastewater project and the future construction. We are currently still negotiating those, so there is a deadline of October 15th that the LGC has placed on us, which is prior to the next meeting. This resolution would authorize me executing those agreements based on the terms that the LGC approves, as well as our town attorney pending his review. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the resolution authorizing the town manager to execute the industry agreements with Grifols and Novo Nordisk.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the Resolution Number 21, 2021-45. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Up next is a parking recreation update to the comprehensive list of fees and charges. We're getting our money's worth out of that tonight, aren't you?
You can see me one more time, too. So, or listen to me. So, we were putting together update to the comprehensive list of fees and charges. That's what y'all see in front of you tonight. And part of this became, we started doing this because we were looking at market standards. We were looking at kind of comparisons for what other parking recreation departments are doing around the state and the nation. So, that's where these changes come from. In addition to that, with, when you see, say, the shelter changes, with adding the two new shelters at East Clayton Community Park, we hadn't done any updates to our shelter fees in quite a long time. So, that's where those come from. So, I'm open to answer any questions you all may have about those right now.
Okay. Questions or comments for staff? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowen.
I make a motion we adopt Ordinance 2021-10-01.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the Ordinance 2021-10-01. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Up next is Lawson Glen Wastewater Allocation.
Again, Joshua Berry, Engineering Director. Most times, we come before you with an allocation request. It's usually tied to a master plan of some sort. This one is separate. Just a little background on that. With some of the recent planning updates with 160D, some projects are moving forward more now administratively. The policy in terms of wastewater is still in place that projects over 10,000 still must be come before council. So, that is why I'm here tonight, putting the Lawson Glen project before you. It's a 90-lot subdivision adjacent and near Ranch Road and Little Creek Road. The project is moving forward administratively, so it's not coming before council, but still bringing the request for wastewater. The request for the project is a total of 22,500 gallons per day. The project has been scored based on the wastewater allocation policy. It did score a total of 70 points to move forward and bring to you before tonight. One other thing to note, in most projects and most large requests and subdivisions, we are phasing those and bringing a phased approach before you. This one in this magnitude is right about that range in terms of what we typically have phased, in terms of phasing a project. So, tonight, the request is for the lump sum of the 22,500 gallons per day to the Lawson Glen subdivision. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Where are we at right now with wastewater? What is our capacity until we get a new plant built?
So, what we are doing, again, as I mentioned, that phased approach. I don't have a solid number for you right now. What I can propose is I can, if the manager agrees, bring an update to you. We're really looking at a timeline, and as the larger projects are coming through, it's granted on a timeline. So, it's difficult to give you one solid number because we are phasing projects out and it's more on a timeline. If it's something I can do, maybe bring back a graphic in terms of timeline, in terms of how this stuff lays out over time in relation to when our new projects come in line. Again, it's just difficult for me to give you one lump number at this point because we are phasing these things out, and we are putting it into quarters of a year into basically a spreadsheet model of phasing these projects out and extending them out over a certain amount of time. So, with that being said, it's kind of difficult to bring one lump sum number to you. I'm happy to do that. I don't have it prepared tonight, but I'd love to bring that back before you in terms of timeline at a future council meeting with manager. Just go with that.
I just don't want to cut ourselves short. Yeah, we're out of sewer in two years, and the plant's not ready in three.
Understood. So, we are actively monitoring. We're also working some agreements with others to be able to extend that and monitoring what we can do, anticipating some other agreements and other things come through. As we're planning, we do anticipate being able to serve this project at the 22,000.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Joshua. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution 2021-46, Lawson Glen Wastewater Allocation.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2021-46. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, under staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mayor, Council, just one item really I want to touch base on today. I believe the last meeting, Deputy Interim Niner Lee spoke to you guys about the COVID policy with regard to leave. Town Attorney's Office has reviewed what had been presented as a recommendation, which would be providing 80 hours of paid leave associated with COVID-19, either illness or quarantine, to those vaccinated employees, and reinstating the five-day borrow policy that had previously expired on June 30th for unvaccinated employees. At this point, I believe that would be our recommendation moving forward. If you are all in agreement with that, we can go ahead and establish that as a policy and move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? All right. I think we're good. Move forward. Town Attorney?
No report, Mayor, but could we get a vote on that last item, please?
Yes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the COVID, I don't know what the phrase is.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve to hear a second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And I have no report, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Town Clerk?
No reports. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other staff?
Hello again. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Just wanted to share some information about a recent grant that the Clayton Chamber of Commerce received and their foundation. Duke Energy has been doing a series of grants, 30 grants, across North Carolina for three-quarters of a million dollars. The Clayton Chamber Foundation was recipient of a $25,000 grant, and, which is fantastic, to undergo its Clayton Downtown District Revitalization Program. And it's a collaborative between the Chamber, the foundation, the DDA, and also will be working with town of Clayton staff on this, similar to the program that the Chamber Foundation did last year, helping businesses with small grants. It's going to kind of continue on with using a similar framework of that. So, grants of $500 to $2,500 per business and offer financial assistance to them to help them in either helping to move forward or confront challenges that the COVID pandemic and other issues have brought about. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. It's going to be, applications are going to open November 15th, and will close no later than January 15th. So, hopefully, some good Christmas presents there and some needed help to some of our local businesses here. And just thank Duke Energy and thank the Chamber and the foundation for their leadership on this and want to make you aware of that. So, and it's a nice picture that was out there in the media and on LinkedIn, and thought you might want to see that. So, thank you for the time.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic, and we are so appreciative to the partnership we have with all three, helping support our downtown businesses. Thank you. It was awesome. Up next is the Comprehensive Growth Plan Update.
Right. I'm here for that one, too. I've been working closely with our new planning director, Ben Howell, on the growth plan update and really making good progress on that. The planning board heard, had a chance to, after the joint meeting a few weeks ago last week, the planning board had a chance to review it. And in the meeting, there's some good conversation about that, but I think it's fair to characterize that they're, you know, feeling good about the plan. There were some minor suggestions they had for the October meeting, but I think we're on a good path there and sticking with the timeline. This October, or this Thursday, October 7th, out at the Clayton Community Center in the outdoor area, we will be having a public meeting from 5:30 to 7:00. So, encourage anyone to come out and really see the plan. We'll have poster boards. We would ask questions of staff and our consultants. Also, we'll have an online portal now that that plan is up through, I believe, the 22nd. So, really, just encourage comments to everyone and just want to get that information out there. But really feel like the plan and the process is moving along well, and hopefully, we'll be able to keep to the timeline that we had discussed. So, feeling good about that and getting good feedback as well from our partners.
Questions or comments? So, nothing like putting you on the spot. So, while you're here.
Yes.
Can we just give the council a really brief update on what's transpiring with the Downtown Parking Task Force, just kind of where we are, a quick little synopsis?
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, the Downtown Parking Task Force met last week for the second time, and we've been working through a process of really narrowing down to recommendations. So, we're hoping that the group will have three to five recommendations that they can bring before you, before the end of the year here. The idea was, we did kind of a big brainstorm, got that down, had fun with sticky dots and Post-it notes and got all the ideas there. And then, we're able to narrow that down. And really, the goal of the next meeting, which is next week and should be the final meeting of the task force, at least for this specific topic, is to finalize those, make sure there's no omissions, errors, clarify those things, and really get down to an actionable plan moving forward. But I think it's been a really productive conversation. Appreciate your leadership, Mayor. Appreciate all the folks in the room that are taking their time there. And I think we're going to have some good things to bring about before you. I'd say more, but I don't want to spoil any surprises there in what they're going to bring. But I think they're hitting, I think, a lot of the key topics that have been brought up, and I think some really good thinking there.
Yeah. And it's really amazing the amount of passion that that task force has for their level of commitment for downtown safe parking and places for everyone to park.
Absolutely.
That's perfect. Okay. Thank you for the update.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm like, Matt, you know, we're going to hear from you like the third time has to be a charm tonight. The next item is Cycle NC event.
Yes, I'm not Scott Bernard. Scott and actually Patrick have been working very closely together for Cycle NC. We're lucky to have them coming through our town again. This came up pretty quickly over the last six months or so. And this Thursday, they'll be coming through. It will just be a lunch stop. be coming through. It'll just be a lunch stop, so they'll breeze in, breeze out. We've been working with PD to make sure the route's safe. We just wanted to kind of get you guys up to this situation, make sure you know what's going on when you see a bunch of cyclists and spandex in downtown on Thursday. Patrick, do you have any more to add to that? Probably has a lot.
I would like to thank Nathaniel Shelton, our PIO, and Kat White, his intern. They've been fantastic in helping putting together some of the materials and really assisting. Been a little short-staffed in our team and working to get that, that fixed. Hoping to have an introduction here at the next meeting for you all, but really been a team effort across the board. Amy Sharon as well, just really a lot of people across to make this an awesome event. We've gone out, touched all the restaurants, made sure that they're aware. Many of them were very thankful for this because they did not know it was coming, and so that they wanted to order up or staff up. So, we have a page now that we're going to be advertising with a QR code, going to have folks out there and Creedmore the night before. They can scan it with their phones. It'll go to a PDF, and then all of those icons will link to the restaurants that are going to be open. So, they'll really hopefully have some good economic impact. We've heard that from folks before, that they felt the economic impact the last time that we're here, and hoping we can just make it cooler and better and just have a great time and really show off all the awesome stuff we've been doing in Clayton. And that's done because we're able to compete that last little Greenway section and get people into downtown. So, really excited about all of that and what comes in the future in terms of getting more people and more, more people, more bodies, more butts and chairs, if you will, in our restaurants and our local retailers. So, it's a really good thing.
So, is that app going to tell them where to park your bike? Because, you know, we are having some discussion on the task force about alternative vehicular parking.
So, it's been, Horn Square will be closed that day, and the forward team from Cycle NC will be setting up bike racks. So, everyone, and they've got a route that's been pre-advertised to come through, kind of come down Front Street, come up around Central and get in. They like to make right turns like UPS trucks, so they'll be able to park their bikes there. We anticipate 10:30 to 2:30, kind of somewhere in that four-hour block, folks will be coming through depending on their pace, park their bikes in Horn Square, and then be able to scatter out through downtown. So, I think there's between 800 and 1,000 riders. As we've talked to the restaurants, hey, even if a quarter of them stop and get off their bike and get out of restaurants, 200 more people eating lunch downtown is a good thing. We'd like to see more than that, and I think there will be more than that, but, you know, don't want to overpromise too much, but still, that's, we anticipate quite a few spandex downtown on Thursday.
Bike again?
This is this Thursday, Thursday, October 7th. Yep.
We'll have our, some of our staff from, from Parks and Recreation Department, I believe Patrick's going to be out there, who are also volunteering to help. Get everybody where they need to go once they get off their bikes.
Fantastic. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So, I think basically that's another way of saying if you're ordering takeout on Thursday in town of Clayton, you should do it earlier than later. Well, yes. All right, up next is informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak?
Just a quick reminder, tomorrow is Clayton's Homecoming Parade. The streets will be closed, and 5:45 is the time of the parade, correct? Or 6 is the parade, 5:45 is our streets. And the parade routes on Facebook, that's been promoted out, and we're excited and just wanted to make sure that, you know, we collaborate with them to make this a great event. I think last year, they couldn't do it because of COVID, and then in the spring, it rained, so we're hoping for the best.
Wonderful. Thank you for the reminder. Any other staff? All right, I'll open the floor for public comment or informal discussion. Anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Bowen?
Counsel, I would like to ask our town manager, town attorney, where we stand with the termination of the lease with YMCA that we voted on last meeting to terminate.
I'll give you a quick report on that to supplement the email. At the last meeting, we were directed to issue a notice to cancel the lease for the Palatine Road property. That lease has 180-day notice provision, and we were, we were instructed to do that by the end of the month. Before the end of the month, we did receive a letter from the YMCA asking for a meeting to discuss it. Manager and I met last week with the folks from the Y, received a follow-up correspondence from them, and that has been forwarded to you. Essentially, there were some, there were some discussions around a restrictive covenant that is in place on the Palatine Road property and what it would take to get that restriction released. I don't, I mean, I think that speaks for itself. If you've seen that, if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to try to respond to it. But that's, that's where we are.
Do you need another motion to proceed, or what?
Well, as I understood the council's direction, we were to issue that notice as of this meeting unless we were instructed otherwise. And I think at this time, you've got the, you've got the information that we've got.
My vote is to go with it.
Second.
We'll send it out.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? I did have one thought that if there are a good amount, really, of bicyclists here for NC Cycle Day, did we give any consideration to like maybe having some food trucks? Because I don't think if there's four, five, 600 bikes during a lunch hour that, you know, I don't know whether, I don't know how much capacity there is from the restaurant, but I just wanted to put it out there. It's, wouldn't hurt to give some consideration around some food trucks or something. The worst thing is to, is to host and have somebody come, and then it takes like way too long to eat. So, I just want to make sure we have a plenty.
Deep River is going to be doing a food truck there and be pulling some folks in there, so I, we've got, I think, a dozen different restaurants across the board.
Okay.
And the hope is that stretching that out over those four hours, we're, we're a little bit in a, like, a little bit of unknown in this situation. Scott and I have been kind of navigating that, trying to understand. We don't want to over, have overcapacity and then have a bunch of food trucks and make, not have our downtown restaurants here get the full economic impact. But yes, obviously, we don't want to have an hour wait out the door for everyone. That's not going to necessarily be a, so we think we've hit the sweet spot by letting everyone know, getting people a bunch of different options, and we're, I guess, fingers crossed that we're, that we found the happy medium there between, and, you know, folks will have opportunities to go all the way from Deep River down to Don Beto's, Smithfield, Festejos on the other side of Maine, and across that whole spectrum there, we should be able to fill everyone up. That's the, that's the goal.
Cool. Thank you. All right, any other comments from council? Anything else to come before this council? Nothing else to come before this council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Goodnight.